All good. We have everyone. Eileen, please read the opening statement.
Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, February 27th, 2023, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 13th, 2022, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 13th, 2022, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 13th, 2022, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor. Mr. Cantor.
Oh, his audio is out.
Mr. Cantor, it shows that you're not muted, and now it shows you're muted. Now you're unmuted. You have no microphone. Thumbs up.
Well, he's here for attendance purposes, so.
Yes, so thumbs up for attendance purposes. Okay.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yeah.
Mr. Stanton. Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Ryan's here.
Mr. Rubell.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Andy, can we have a swearing in of the professionals?
Yes. Mr. Cunliffe, Spiro, and Ms. Bean, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be... Jen, are you there? I don't... Ah, there she is. Unmute yourself.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
I do.
The professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good.
Is that you, Glenn? We got you. All right. Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, February 13th, 2023, eligible voters, Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Orozco, Ryan, Rubell, and Sayah. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Eileen, item six on the agenda, vouchers. Are there any vouchers?
No vouchers for tonight.
Eileen, item seven on the agenda, correspondence. Any correspondence?
I have one thing for correspondence. Case number BA 2121, Countryside North American Partners LLC will be carried to May 22nd, 2023 with no further notice, and the board has been granted extension through that date of May 22nd, 2023.
Got it. All right, one second. Hey, John? Mr. Parisi says he's unable to join the webinar that he's been removed. Can you advise him?
Paul, Ken Pape said the same thing.
I don't know how they would.
Like, he was in, he got kicked out, and now he's not allowed to join back in for some reason.
Yeah, I didn't take away any permissions. I'll go through the settings to see if there's a way to get them back again. Just give me a sec.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I have a minute. I just wanted to bring a comment to your attention.
Yes.
Um, I had therapy today, so I may have to occasionally stand up. Can't be sitting too long.
Well, we hope you're well, Rich, and.
Yeah, thanks. But I'll still be in the room, so.
You're quite welcome to do what's necessary, sir.
Thanks.
Jen, can you ask Ken if he can sign in as a different name? John's unable to get them back in the meeting.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Is it the name or the email address?
Address.
Probably the email.
Okay. Try to ask them.
And if anybody has a contact for Mark Parisi as well.
I'm telling her now.
Thank you.
And the other thing, at least for Mr. Parisi, is he could... If you can't get in by video, you could call in till the video's worked out.
Okay, so, in resuming while we're working things out, Eileen?
I'm here.
So, for case number BA 21-21, Countryside North American Partners, this application is being carried with no further notice, an extension of time to May 23rd?
22nd, 2023.
22nd, 2023. Thank you. And there's any further notice on this one, or no?
No further notice.
No further notice, okay. So for everyone out there that's here for case number BA 2121, this case is being carried to 22 May, 2023.
I see Mr. Pape back in.
Yeah, Eileen, Ken said he's back in the attendee waiting room.
Okay, we'll bring him in. Thank you.
Okay, Eileen, are there any resolutions?
No resolutions tonight.
All right. So... Applications before us. Case number BA 21-10, Route 9, Howell LLC. This is a use and bulk variance. Application of Route 9 Howell LLC as applicant and owner of premises known as Block 71, Lot 20, seeking use and bulk variance approval to construct two separate warehouse buildings, including four separate office spaces totaling 190,000 square feet of warehouse and 10,000 square feet of office space with associated parking, trailer parking, loading, and stormwater management facilities. This is a bifurcated application. The applicant is only seeking use variance approval at this time. This application was previously scheduled for December 19th, 2022, when it was carried to February 27th, 2023. Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, and public, good evening. Kenneth Pape of the firm Heilburn Pape, on behalf of your applicant. Am I coming in clearly, board members?
Mr. Pape, may I have a second, please? Andy, just a quick question. Mr. Arthur Sten was noticed on this application. I just want to verify to make sure that Mr. Bill Stanton is an eligible voting member for this case, or if he needs to recuse himself?
I would actually prefer to recuse myself on this. I don't want to have any implications for my father, myself, our business, or the municipality. We do own property neighboring, and were noticed.
If your family owns property within 200 feet, Mr. Stanton, that's the appropriate decision.
Yeah, we do. We were noticed. Although it is my father, you know, it's my family, and I think I'd be doing the township a disservice and my father if I didn't.
Okay, so, Mr. Stanton, you're welcome to recuse yourself, and you want to stand by as a bystander?
I would like to remain an attendee, as I do have an interest in what happens and how this goes.
All right, John, can you move Mr. Stanton?
Yes, we're moving him now.
Thank you very much, guys.
Okay.
And can we just say, I wasn't sure who raised the question of Mr. Stanton's participation?
That was John Aguirre.
Okay. I recognized the voice, but then I didn't see him talking, and I was confused about it.
My last question was, am I coming through clearly, board members?
You are coming through clearly, Mr. Pape.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, and public, this is an application brought by the applicant, Route 9 Howell LLC, seeking a use variance to permit the construction of two warehouse buildings totaling 190,000 square feet on lands that are known as Lots 20 and 21, Block 71, which is a 20.24 acre parcel located in the HD1 Zone. And thank you for confirming that the board took jurisdiction in December, and we were continued to this evening without the requirement of renotice or republication. This is a property that was assembled by our client. He initially owned the southern portion of this property and was the successful bidder when the Township of Howell auctioned the northern property. The northern property, some may remember, was the location of a homeless community that had taken up residence and had entered into some agreements with Howell to remain in that property for a number of years. When our client purchased the property, he had the obligation, the township imposed, and he accepted the obligation of removing the homeless community, and he did so in a very kind and humane manner, removed all of the people and assisted in their relocation. The properties before we came before this board were thoroughly investigated. From an environmental perspective, wetland approvals were sought and are in place, and the proposed development that we present to you is consistent with the wetlands that are on the property and does not violate them in any way. There was also Phase 1 environmental audits that were conducted of the property, and those environmental audits, one requested by the Environmental Commission, were delivered to them. We spent a number of meetings with the Environmental Commission going back to 2021, and most recently in December of 2022. We spent a number of meetings with the fire chief. I was going through the list of times that I met with Chief Lewis. I met with him again today to make certain that he had reviewed the current plans. We had met previously on three separate occasions for his input. The... As you indicated, Mr. Chair, this is a bifurcated application. Although there is a plan prepared by Crest Engineering, and it contains considerable information and detail, a lot of which was generated over the last year and a half in response to comments and concerns from your professionals, it remains a use variance application and not a fully engineered site plan. I point all of that out because there are elements of a site plan that are not fully developed on this plan. We will, if the board approves our use variance, acknowledge the obligation to return with a fully engineered site plan and to go through all of those details. The applicant is represented by four professionals this evening. Peter Strong is the professional engineer responsible for the preparation of the plans, and he'll present the plans. He'll introduce the project, and he'll present his plans. Steve Rodasty is the architect, and he will present the conceptual architectural plans that he has generated for the site. Scott Kennel is our traffic expert. He has a lot to share with you. Amongst the things that Scott will describe is the responsibilities that he undertook to meet with the DOT to review this project, and also the guidance that he gave our client to acquire lands across the street from the site so that we are in a position to rebuild the Estelle Lane Jug Handle to accommodate the traffic that we anticipate. He will also go through the usual traffic and parking elements of the site plan. And our fourth and final witness is Allison Coffin, our professional planner, whose responsibility is to present the planning basis for the use variance relief. With permission, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to call Mr. Peter Strong, share his credentials with you, and go right into his direct presentation.
Mr. Pape, before we do that, is the applicant going to be available to answer?
Doctor, Dr. Richard Roberts is listening in, and if the board wishes for Dr. Roberts to speak, I'll reach out to him and ask him to join us.
Well, Mr. Pape, you know, one of the things is, you know, the applicant itself, you know, the operational considerations of what this particular request is being made for, you know, 100,000, 190,000 square foot warehouses, you know, a significant, you know, envelope. And, you know, wondering, is it a Lidl's? Is it a Tarjay? Is it a distribution center? What kind of activity is going to take place there? Is it a US Postal Service, UPS? Is it an Amazon? We have no idea what's, you know, behind the curtain here.
Surely. Mr. Chairman, excellent question. Dr. Roberts is a real estate investor and is not someone who would be in a position to testify to operations. We can bring an operations witness before the board. We're not prepared to do so this evening. I can tell you that the goal, and this is not going to be fully responsive to your inquiry, but the goal is a traditional warehouse. It's not last mile. It's not what is called a van distribution center. We are looking to create two standard warehouse storage buildings on the site. But operations testimony can be presented to the board. I don't believe that would be in Dr. Roberts' purview to present that testimony.
Okay, well, then, without that, Mr. Pape, then how do we get to, you know, the traffic engineer, right? I mean, we don't know what's coming and going. How do we know, you know, the two have to line up, right?
If... I think the traffic testimony is based on the IT manual, and I think that we can present that. The operations testimony does not necessarily have to be placed in any particular order, as long as the information is before the board, before decisions asked. And it's your board to run, Mr. Chairman, and I respect that, but I would ask that you allow us to present the witnesses that we have this evening. We can return into next available meeting with operations.
I would just say, Mr. Chair, if Mr. Pape is not prepared to provide that testimony this evening, then the planning testimony is going to have to wait because the assessment of how this is going to operate plays right into, is the site particularly suited? And what is the positive and negative criteria? So, it's your case. It's 100% your decision, but if you are not prepared to move forward with that, the, you know, I agree with the chairman. I think that, yeah, relying on IT is one thing, but understanding how this is going to operate, like, all warehouses are not equal. And so, you know, what the anticipated operation of the site is, is going to lead directly into the number of vehicles, the distribution of the vehicles, et cetera. So, I mean, I'm going to leave it to you to decide how you want to proceed, but absent that testimony, I think, is problematic in moving forward.
Sure. Well, the fact witnesses, I don't disagree with Ms. Bean. The fact witnesses are Peter Strong, Steve Rodasty, and Scott Kennel, and we'll have an operations fact witness introduced. The planning testimony, I agree, can only be presented to the board when all of the fact witnesses have completed their testimony. So, I would agree that Allison Coffin's testimony this evening would be premature.
You mean expert? You mean expert, Mr. Pape? You said fact? The engineer and the chap, isn't that an expert witness?
They are expert witnesses. They're going to be placing facts before the board, facts that a planner then uses as the foundation for generating her report and opinions.
Understood.
No, thank you.
I just, I mean, I would also caution on the traffic because I think relying upon generic traffic is one thing, but understanding how the site is anticipated to operate is going to play directly into the traffic. So, just keep that in mind as you proceed forward.
Understood. I think that there are elements of the traffic that we can present this evening, the guidance that Mr. Kennel provided to the applicant and the design team on how to rebuild the intersection and the jug handle and the meetings with the DOT. But if, to be cautious, we can wait for his quantification of traffic until the operations is before the board. So, Mr. Chair, with permission, I'll begin with Mr. Strong. I intend to go to Mr. Rodasty as the second witness, and at that point, I'll sit where we are and we'll make a decision as to whether we introduce Mr. Kennel.
John, we'll go with that?
I mean, 100%, it's his case. He can present it in the order with which he chooses. It's, you know, we're just putting our concerns on the record just so that you're aware of what kind of we're looking for.
And... A sincere response. Thank you. With that, Mr.
Let's get your first person on.
If Mr. Aguilar could let Mr. Strong and Mr. Rodasty in, please. I have one further administrative element. We have a court reporter transcribing the hearing this evening, and with the chair's and council's permission, we will make that court reporter's transcript available, and if it is your wish, it can be the official transcript of the hearing. We'll deliver it to the board in a timely manner.
Andy?
That works. Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Very good. So, I need to, if we could let Mr. Strong and Mr. Rodasty in, please.
They're both in. Mr. Rodasty, you're muted. Andy, please.
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Strong and Mr. Rodasty, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, starting with Mr. Strong.
Peter W. Strong, S.T.R.O.N.G.
Stephen Rodasty, R.A.D.O.S.T.I.
Witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman and Mr.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Strong, I guess he's the first one, Mr. Pape?
He is.
Let's get his credentials on the record.
You've got it, Mr. Chair. Mr. Strong, please share with the board and the public your professional education background.
Yes, I have a 1971 degree in civil engineering from New York College of Engineering, now known as New Jersey Institute of Technology. I practiced civil engineering and land development in the central New Jersey area for the last 50 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1975, and I'm currently a licensed professional engineer in the state of Florida as well, and I started Crest Engineering in 1981 and have been associated with the firm ever since.
Mr. Chair, as you accept Mr. Strong, allow him to testify this evening as a professional engineer.
Mr. Strong, you are current New Jersey Certified Professional Engineer, correct?
Certainly am.
Okay, we accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Strong, if you could begin by identifying the exhibits that you intend to rely upon to make your presentation this evening.
Uh, yes, I have several potential exhibits. Uh, yes, I have several potential exhibits, um, an aerial map of the site. An aerial map that shows the proposed layout on top, superimposed on top of it. Um, I have a, uh, the variant sketch plan that shows some of the, uh, uh, stormwater and grading elements of the site, and I have a colored rendering of the site plan. Um, and in addition, I also have brought with me, uh, at the suggestion of Mr. Cunliffe, the previous plan that we originally submitted for this, um, project in case anyone wanted to see how it has changed over the last two years that we've been working, uh, towards this, uh, this hearing date. Um, I can share my screen with, uh, the board if you'll allow me and we can proceed with the exhibits.
One second, Mr. Strong.
Sure.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
A, a, a before and now, is that what it, is that what we're looking at, going to look at here?
Uh, so the, this application and I don't have the exact date in front of me, it was filed, uh, at least a year and a half ago. So the plan has gone through some revisions from what was first submitted to the board to what is being presented to the board tonight. So, uh, it was merely a suggestion, uh, uh, if the board has questions, obviously it was a plan that was already submitted to the board. It might be something in reference to the board so they could see the changes that have been undertaken to the site prior to the application being presented to us tonight, what you're seeing tonight, so.
All right, good.
It's not a major focus, but it is, it is available if you want to see it.
All right, Mr. Strong, go ahead, present.
So, so I think we're starting with the, the aerial photograph, um, for orienting the, the board. Maybe the aerial photograph with the plan superimposed on it. And then we can go to the, I think we would then go to the rendering.
Okay, uh, so everybody can see this, this is the aerial exhibit, which shows.
I don't see it.
It's not loaded, Mr. Strong.
Yeah, you might be sharing if you got two monitors, the wrong screen.
I only have one monitor and it's quite visible on my screen, but, uh.
Charlie, do you have this?
All we see is your, like, documents list.
Okay.
Peter, do you, is there, is this one of the exhibits, the A exhibits that were marked to the board?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you know which one it is?
I think it's A thirteen.
Yeah, I don't know that I, uh, A thirteen?
Say thirteen or A fourteen.
I apologize. I was looking at the wrong exhibit list. Let's see. Yeah, I don't know that I have that. I think that would have to be, uh, John or Eileen pulls that up. That's not a link on the, uh.
You're still not seeing that?
No, Peter. We're just seeing your, your list of exhibits.
My display says you're screen sharing and it's got the exhibit up there, so I don't know, I don't know.
Maybe go back out. Can you reverse your way out and come back in?
Any change? No?
No.
It looks like it's circling. John?
I never had this, never had this problem before.
John or Eileen helping out here?
Or he could email it to Charlie. That's the other way. But that's possible.
We're bringing it up now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter, is this the one that you intended to begin?
Uh, no, this is, this is the one that's got the layout superimposed on it, but it, it will, it will suffice if, uh.
Wait, Eileen, which number was this? A what?
This one is A thirteen.
Hmm, I thought that was. Peter, let's work with it.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to ask if you could, with the aerial photograph, identify the properties that we are presenting to the board for their consideration. If you could give us the acreage of the properties, lots twenty and twenty-one.
Can you close out the right-hand panel on that, please? Over where it says convert, you, you have. And then open her up. I think we're there. John, Charlie, this is what we're looking at?
I mean, it's up to them. I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure where this is going, so. We'll see what he says.
This, the aerial is for purposes of orienting all members who are watching. I think maybe if we could get a little bit more of the, that, that looks good. So Peter, if you could, we're looking for the, the location of the property, the zone of the property, the size of the, the lots. Um, and then perhaps we can just kind of go around the perimeter of, of the property.
Okay, so, so the exhibit shows, uh, Route nine pretty much running north, south, the up and down through the middle of the site. Um, to the left or the, uh, west of Route nine is the, the two lots that we're mostly concerned with this evening, lots twenty and twenty-one and block seventy-one. Uh, with a combined total of, uh, twenty point two four acres. Um, there's also, that, that's outlined in yellow. Um, also on the east side are lots fifty-two and fifty-three and block twenty-five, which are peripherally involved because of the, uh, proposed, uh, improvement to the jug handle uh, on the easterly side of, uh, Route nine at Estelle Lane. Um, the, uh, the site is, uh, vacant at this present time as far as improvements go. Um, has been improved with various structures in the past, but at the current time it doesn't have any. Um, there are two proposed warehouses. You can see the northerly warehouse insisting of a hundred and ten thousand square feet, um, including five thousand square, square feet of office space. And the southerly, uh, dr, uh, building, uh, consisting of ninety thousand square feet, uh, including eighty-five thousand square feet of office space, uh, the.
I think that's.
Sorry?
I think that's eighty-five hundred square feet of office, not eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand square feet of warehouse.
Thank you.
Five thousand square feet of office, ninety thousand total. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, there is a singular, uh, access road coming in off the jug handle, uh, that would be, the jug handle will be improved and Scott Kennel will talk more about that, uh, at his uh, portion of the testimony, uh, main drive that comes in between the two buildings. Um, and then there is, uh, there's two office spaces in the of the easterly and westerly corners of the, uh, northerly warehouse building. Um, small parking lot in the front near that office. Uh, another one in the, another two actually, uh, in the corner near the, uh, westerly office and then fifteen loading docks along the west side of the proposed building. Uh, in the middle between the two buildings, there are some trailer parking spaces, fourteen in the the location directly to the south of the northerly building, another eight, uh, approximately at the end of the main entrance drive. The southerly building, um, has two office spaces, one in the northerly corner and one in the middle of the westerly wall. Um, and there is parking along the northerly side of that southerly building as well as along the westerly side of that building. And then there are twenty loading dock areas, uh, to the south end of that building and an exit drive out to Route nine, uh, from that particular area so that the trucks can circulate around the site or back out to the jug handle, depending which way they, uh, they want to go from, uh, from there.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
The proposed warehouses, are they single level or two, two level or, or higher?
They're, well, they're single level.
They are single level. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mr. Rodasty will talk more about the, uh, the buildings themselves and the architecture, but, uh, yes, they're single level. Um, so as a, for a total of, uh, of the, on the site that we're proposing, uh, we have thirty-five loading docks. We have twenty-two trailer parking spaces. We have eighty-three car parking spaces where seventy-one would be required under the, under your ordinance requirements. Um, and there's a total of two hundred thousand square feet of building space of which, um, a hundred ninety thousand square feet is warehouse and ten thousand square feet is office space.
Mr. Strong, what is the current zone of the, of lots twenty and twenty-one?
The current zone is H D one. And we meet all of the requirements, bulk requirements of the H D one zone.
So that would be building coverage, impervious coverage, setbacks.
Lot area setbacks, uh, all of that is including, including buffers, buffers along the, uh, northerly and westerly property lines.
And at my understanding, there's a single variance associated, singles bulk variance associated with the relief. And that has to do with the number of signs that the applicant requests for the warehouse buildings. Ones permitted, we're asking for two or maximum of the number of tenants that are in the building. Is that the only bulk variance that's on your plans?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, although, Mr. Chair and board members, this is not a site plan. There are elements of the plan that are site plan elements. And I'm going to ask that Mr. Strong go through those and just address them um, to the extent that he can for a plan that's not fully engineered. Think that over the last year and a half, most of the time that was, we have spent with Mr. Cunliffe was addressing the stormwater requirements and addressing the changes in the stormwater requirements as they were changed by the D E P last year. If you could describe the stormwater system that you have designed for the, for the site. And I'm going to then ask if you could go through a number of series of questions about that system being compliant with applicable state and municipal, um, requirements. If you could just do a simple overview of the stormwater system.
Uh, okay, I think would be more useful if we had one of the other exhibits, but.
Okay, what would you like to put up?
Uh, well, um, I could do it with the colored rendering or I could do it with the, uh, site plan drawing.
A sixteen. A sixteen is your colored rendering. If we could. Is.
A sixteen is come, it's coming up. It's just taking a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Can we blow that one up? But also this unnecessary right panel that you're, I have on the screen, you can close that out right there, right there. Boom. Knock it out. There we go.
Mr. Strong, are you ready?
Uh, yeah, could we shift the drawing up a little bit so we can see the whole thing, uh? Okay. Okay, so this is, uh, a better view of the, uh, what we saw before on the, overlaid on the aerial plan. Um, in the two, the two offices, um, with the central driveway coming in off the jug handle.
So then that's a, uh, that, that current jug handle is going to turn into a, uh, a two-way? Is that it?
Yes, um, well, actually it'd be three lanes because there'll be one lane coming in and two lanes going out.
Okay.
But Mr. Kennel will talk more about that.
Um, doesn't have any of the colored versions.
So this, the, uh, the stormwater for the site, um, the northerly area, we have um, three stormwater detention basins, uh, designed under the, the new NJ D E P and Howell Township regulations, uh, which call for, um, basically infiltration basins to, uh, put the stormwater runoff back into the ground as much as possible for, um, discharging any, any excess and any excess would be still below the, uh, the current, uh, stormwater runoff, uh, from the, from the various locations on the site. So we have three basins that service the, the northerly area of the, uh, the site and take care of the, the northerly warehouse and the parking, truck loading and, um, trailer parking areas, uh, that are adjacent to it and part of it. Um, and then in the southerly area, um, we have two basins, one on the westerly wall, a western property line and one on the southerly property line that, uh, would do likewise for that southerly building and its parking and truck loading areas, uh, including the driveway out to, uh, to Route nine. So that, uh, the stormwater, um, we've demonstrated, I think to Mr. Cunliffe and he can speak for himself, of course, but, um, our conversations, uh, we have demonstrated that, uh, the system that we've, uh, basically designed, but, uh, is, is not fully done, it would be done at the site plan, uh, stage. But we've demonstrated that the stormwater, uh, as laid out and, um, preliminarily, uh, designed would adequately satisfy the, uh, regulations of the D E P and the Howl Township, uh, regarding stormwater management on the, uh, on the site for this, for this layout.
So if I may, there are D E P requirements and municipal requirements. Are you comfortable advising the board that you can design a system similar to that which is shown here? Um, to the satisfaction of both the D E P and the township?
Absolutely.
And these smaller basins around the site, this is the new, new design standard that comes out of last year's D E P regulations?
Yes, yes, it is.
And, uh, all of this would be the obligation of the property owner and would not, all of these systems would be the obligation of property owner would not create any burden on the township. Is that an accurate statement?
They would all be privately owned and maintained by the, uh, the owner of the site, um, owner operator of the site.
And I think there's one more part of the D E P regulations that we really should place on the record. The D E P imposes on the design engineer the obligation to create an operations and maintenance manual to submit it to the township engineer for review and approval and then to record it as a covenant on the property that runs with the land. In fact, the O N M, the operations and maintenance manual, O N M manual is one of the obligations that you would have to provide to satisfy Mr. Cunliffe at the time of site plan. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, it is.
I'm going to ask, as far as to. I'm gonna ask, as far as to grading, if we could just what regrading of this site would would be necessary to accommodate the two buildings that you're showing?
Well, obviously, the area where the buildings are and the parking uh would be all part of the regrading, but the areas shown in the darker green um along the the northeast corner of the building, which includes, there's a small existing pond that's shown in letter blue uh uh in that area, uh and then along the northerly and westerly property lines, um wrapping around the two buildings. Um, those areas are intended to to be areas that would not be disturbed by the uh uh improvement of the site, um with the warehouse uh uses and parking. So that the uh the grading would be confined to the areas within that. And for the most part, in the front of the site, that bordering Route nine would have uh limited grading in that area as well, although we have you can't see it now, but there's lots of landscaping that we're putting in that particular area to uh enhance the streetscape and there you go. And uh but again, the uh the darker green around the exterior, uh west side, the north side and up around the pond and northeast corner, and then there's also a a strip of um existing vegetation and trees that are just in the south of the existing uh jug handle, the reverse jug handle for uh Stella Lane, that would all be uh areas that would remain and not be disturbed. Um, the area in between, obviously, for the buildings and the parking would be disturbed and would be recreated to meet the stormwater regulations, uh to make sure everything flows in the right directions and um meets the stormwater requirements with the Evan Secra Forest.
I ask if you could briefly describe this onsite circulation plan, and I'm saying briefly because Mr. Kennel's responsibilities include some of the details of that design, but you just indicate the means of ingress and egress. See that there's this, there's two separate driveways, how will they function? And um if you could confirm that you have used turning templates of all the anticipated vehicles, tractor trailers, fire vehicles, trash vehicles, and can you confirm that road system handles all of that?
Excuse me, Mr. Pape, there's a hot mic, someone's got a hot mic out there. All right, Mr. Pape, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, the uh, the the circulation, basically, as as I mentioned previously, the main entrance exit would be uh at the uh existing jug handle uh connection with Route nine, which will be widened and improved uh on this side of the, the west side of the road, as well as some improvements to the east side, which Scott will explain a little more later, but uh there would be an entranceway, uh driveway in, and two entrance, uh exit driveways going out. The main circulation would be in between the two buildings, and then split to the north and the south to the loading areas in the backs, and then the, there's an exit driveway from the uh southerly uh area behind the south of the southerly building. And and that uh truck loading area to exit onto Route nine south so that the traffic could circulate in that direction, so that's there's entranceway would all be off of Route nine at the still jug handle, uh exit could be either uh to Route nine north or south from the jug handle, or to Route nine south from the southerly uh exit driveway. Um, yes, and we do have, um, there is an exhibit, I'm not sure where it is at the moment, but uh there is an exhibit that shows the um truck turning radiuses uh superimposed on the site.
And if if you could verbally confirm that the WB sixty-two and the WB sixty-seven and the fire trucks and the trash removal vehicles can all be accommodated safely with this design?
They can be, yes.
And if you could, I know that the fire chief is always interested in the dimensions of the driveways. If you could um share with the board the dimensions of the driveway system onsite. They were identifying where there's one-way traffic and where there's two-way traffic.
Well, the the main entrance off of Route nine, I believe that that's thirty-six feet wide for uh the entering entering and exiting traffic. Uh, it narrows down to thirty feet in between the two buildings, and then uh splits off to uh I believe it's uh twenty-four feet uh in either direction, and then there's a the exit-only driveway, I believe, is twenty feet going out to uh Route nine south.
And Mr. Chair and Board members, those dimensions were shared with Chief Lewis, and in his most recent report confirms that they are satisfactory to him for firefighting purposes. Peter, I'm gonna ask if you could, we you did uh address the parking onsite. I think we have about twelve spaces more than the ordinance requires. You could confirm that when the plan is finally completed, that there will be the required number of E V charging stations incorporated into the parking? I'm going to ask if we go to the landscaping, um, the land landscaping is a site plan element. Uh, considerable landscaping is shown here conceptually and to the board members, it's to demonstrate the commitment of your applicant to creating a highly landscaped and attractive um road front, uh road viewscape along the front. But Peter, if you could just briefly go through the landscaping scheme, and then I'm going to ask if you could also confirm receipt of Shari Spiro's report from December of last year. Just confirm that all of the requests made in that report can and will be addressed at site plan.
Yes, well, as I said previously, we have a significant amount of landscaping in the uh front of the building buildings between the buildings and Route nine uh to supplement the existing vegetation that would be maintained. Those would be a variety of uh deciduous and evergreen trees and ornamental type of trees to enhance the landscape, uh including foundation plantings uh along the uh various uh foundation walls um and wrapping up around the uh the uh north and west ends of the property, um outside of the the buffer, where we'd be in uh supplementing the uh existing vegetation that uh will remain as part of the buffer. And uh the uh the report by Shari Spiro, I have seen that. I've digested it, and I we have no problem with complying with her requests for um additional and enhanced landscaping uh on the site.
I think it's appropriate here to point out that there are buffer requirements in Howl Township, and that you're mind if you could just let the board know that you're mindful of those buffer requirements and that it was your intention to design this plan to not infringe anywhere on the buffers.
That's correct, and I think what we what we've shown here demonstrates that buffer.
Interject, do you want to tell the board and the members of the public where that is? Like, I feel like we're like skipping over very critical details, and I understand this is not the site plan, but all these things factor into whether or not the use variance is appropriate, so do you want to point that out? Because maybe members of the public are unaware of where that is.
Well, uh, I I can't, I can't use my pointer, my uh my mouse to point things um on the display. But I tried to describe it as I've gone around the uh site, but again, um in the northeast corner of the site, which is uh between Route nine and the northerly building, there's a significant area of existing vegetation that is being shown right there.
Yeah, so I I'm just gonna say, like, I I, the concept plans are, you know, it's very difficult for, let's just say, a member of the public to ascertain what that means. You know, probably your better bet would have been to superimpose this over an actual aerial photograph so they could see it, because this shading and how this, how it looks is not really helpful in describing what we're dealing with to the public.
Well, let's try with what we have, I mean, it was our intention to have an exhibit that was meaningful. And and so north is up and right, Highway nine is east, and if, yeah, that's, so let's, buffers on the north, what is the dimension of the buffer that you have um left on the plan?
Well, at a, at a minimum, it's fifty feet uh in this particular northeast corner area. We can see the uh the dash line that runs parallel to property line on the north side, that is, that is the fifty-foot line. Where the the buffer needs to be, and the actual width of that area is probably two hundred feet as opposed to fifty feet, where the existing vegetation around the existing pond will remain.
And as we go towards the west, do you maintain fifty feet at a minimum?
Yes, that's fifty feet, and then you can see the dash line, yeah, it's uh being shown there.
So what is that break in the dark green? What is that light green swath there? Yep.
Um, I think, I believe that's an area where there is no vegetation at the current time.
Right, so you're in a buffer, right?
It's part of the buffer, yeah.
Yeah, so you're putting, I'm putting something there.
We will plant within that, yes.
And then you're also intending to plant additional landscaping in front of the buffer and between, so that you're doing an infill of the existing vegetation, is that accurate?
Yes.
Perhaps we can go to the, go to the western edge of the property, and similarly identify the minimum, the minimum.
Yep, if you go to the south there along that westerly line, uh yeah, there's the vegetation line that would be affected by the grading, but the dark green shows uh uh the fifty-foot buffer that runs a parallel to the uh to the property line all the way down the west side.
That buffer is intact all the way along the western edge of the property?
Yes.
And there's additional lands available for supplementing the landscaping and to do infill of the landscape of the existing vegetation?
That's right.
I think it's important to make this point, although you have a number of stormwater basins around the perimeter, I trust that none of the stormwater basins are in the buffer.
They are not.
And if we could, as we get to the southern edge of the property, if you could describe how you handle the southern edge of the property?
Well, we've we've supplement, we've added landscaping uh along the areas outside the stormwater basins and the uh driveways uh all the way out to to Route nine. And as you can see, there's a commercial, uh other other commercial enterprises to the south of us that the uh already in place, um up to the property line pretty much, uh all the way along that whole southerly boundary. And then we, when you come back out to Route nine, we have more supplemental landscaping on the south side of the exit drive and additional additional plantings on the north side of that, going up to the existing vegetation in the dark green that uh is going up to the uh the jug handle that's currently there now. And then there's more landscaping uh in front of the building up to the the new entrance exit drive.
If I may, if if Ms. Beam, is there anything further that you would want Mr. Strong to identify on this plan for buffer purposes?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, can I just ask a clarifying question also? Uh, we have it in our letter, I know you said the only bulk variance relief that's being sought is uh for the number of signs for the for the buildings and for the the site identification. Um, the site ID sign that's just to the north of the the, I guess, the the circle there, I guess, the uh entrance for the site, um, the intent, so that scales to fifteen feet where twenty foot's required uh to the right-of-way line. The intent would be as part of any future site plan that that's going to be shifted to comply with the requirement, correct?
That's, this is no, no need for and no request for a variance relief for the single monument-style identification.
Okay, and then also to clarify with the buffer, so along the northerly property line in that light green area that Jim was talking about, right? So you're not grading within that fifty-foot buffer. The limit of your grading stops at the fifty feet, and then that balance of whatever five feet of or ten feet of area that doesn't have any vegetation, that's going to be planted to the maximum extent practical, you're not regrading that area, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and uh, and I just want to clarify with the stormwater management. Um, this has been a lengthy process, we've gone back and forth. I still do have some items in my most recent review letter that'll need to be addressed by the applicant. Um, if this is going to go to another hearing, Mr. Pape, uh, I would suggest that uh anything that can be clarified and rectified before you come back would be helpful for the board's consideration. The main one that I just want to point out for the board is with the new stormwater management rules, there's contributory drainage area limits to each stormwater management basin. The basin at the southwestern corner of the um property, and I don't know if, uh, John, if you can scroll down here. That's basin A, that takes approximately uh five point two point three acres of contributory drainage area from parking and from primarily the southerly warehouse building. That is capped at two and a half acres contributory drainage area. So the applicant's gonna need to do something with that basin, whether it needs to be split into two different basins, collecting maximum two and a half. Uh, whether there's an additional uh water quality basin for two and a half acres before it discharges into that larger basin. Um, I think it would behoove the applicant to at least show that on the plan with what they're proposing and how that's going to be to be met. Um, I did also have some other site plan comments uh regarding basin number C. Uh, in the stormwater report, it's modeled as having a discharge, like an outlet control structure and a discharge, but it wasn't shown on the plan. We'd just like to make sure where that's being directed, so if it's uh being directed to like the southerly property line, we want to make sure that's not impacting neighbors to the south. I also had a comment about the emergency spillway for that basin kind of overflowing to the property to the south. Um, I would say anything that could be directed to or connected into like the DOT right-of-way and their conveyance system would be preferable than uh overland flowing onto like neighbors, parking areas and things like that. So that's something that needs to be considered um by the applicant. Uh, I also had some comments regarding soil test pits, I know obviously the site layout has changed in the course of getting to the board here. Uh, the applicant does have a an extensive, extensive complement of test pits throughout the site. However, there's, I think, one or two basins that if you do get to the site plan portion of this, the applicant's gonna have to do additional test pits, infiltration testing for those basins to prove that obviously there's no water table and infiltration issues uh with those basins. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make those comments before we got too past, far past the stormwater management.
Charlie, I'm, I haven't forgot about you, Charlie, I thought Mr. Pape jumped and I thought we'd let let him do the landscaping, and then we would come back to you, but you uh you read my mind, so we're we're there, and is there anything else, Charlie?
Um, I'll let Mr. Pape talk about, I don't know if Mr. Strong is gonna talk about some of the operations in terms of like trash disposal, refuse, uh containment, um lighting anticipated for the site, whether the intent is for it to be inward-facing, whether there's building-mounted lighting, overnight, security lighting, things of that nature, I don't know that we need a warehouse expert to provide testimony on those site plan components, I think that's something Mr. Strong can certainly put some uh some representations on the record for the board's consideration.
Okay. So, before we go to continue with Mr. Strong's presentation, if I may comment, Mr. Cunliffe has spent a considerable amount of time with Mr. Strong and his team working on the on the drainage plan for which we are most appreciative. The comments that were just shared with the the board this evening, Mr. Cunliffe and I had the opportunity to discuss uh earlier today, we understand that there are these additional elements that Mr. Cunliffe wants to see added to the plan. And with the the time that's available to us, we'll add them in. And with the, the time that's available to us, we'll add them in so that they're not, uh, open items. All right, Mr. Pape, excuse me. Sure. There's a hot mic. Yeah, I hea- I hear it coming through sometimes. So, um, Mr. Pape, if you give me the privilege of, uh, uh, surveying the board members to see if they have any questions at this time, please.
Oh, can, can I just ask a couple of questions, Mr. Chair, before you get there?
Go ahead, Jen.
So can we talk about sidewalk? I mean, I understand this is not the site plan, but like none of the plans you submitted showed any sidewalk along Route nine.
If it is the request of the board, there's plenty of room to add that sidewalk in. There's no issue with it.
Okay, so I would just say, I understand it's just a bifurcated use, but prepare to provide sidewalk should we get over the hurdle of the use. We require sidewalk on all Route nine projects.
Could we take just one moment with the, with the jug handle that's there? Would you have a recommendation as to the routing of sidewalk? Would it follow the jug handle in a curvilinear manner or would it cross? This, that issue's come up a couple of times. Uh, just would look for some direction.
Charlie, do you remember what we did for the U-Haul? Application?
That, I believe predates me. I'd have to look at the aerial and see what was actually constructed on that, that roundabout there.
I honestly think it went straight across. I don't think it followed the jug handle around, but we, we can look and let you know.
Okay.
And then, uh, what about, you know, we, we're gonna be looking for obviously a masonry trash enclosure when we get to that point, if we get to that point?
We have, if, if Peter and I, although far apart, Peter and I are holding outlines that we prepared together. And the, after landscaping, the next one is lighting and after lighting is trash. So with permission, I'll return to questioning Peter. Peter, there's, with regard to the lighting, there's no, it's my understanding you've not yet done a lighting plan. But I would ask, you could confirm that the lighting is intended to be LED?
Yes.
It's intended to be lighting that can be controlled as to intensity at different times of the day.
Yes.
That the lighting fixtures will be designed so that the light is, is transmitted into the site and not out of the site.
Correct.
I think that there, there, I spillage is forbidden. I think the only place we'd have any spillage would be on our jug handle. We might have some spillage from our site onto Highway nine. Could you confirm there would be no other spillage of light anywhere on site?
That's correct.
Okay. The balance of the lighting issues are, are, would be part of a lighting design would include the full photometrics that would support the statements made by Mr. Strong. With regard to the trash, if you could indicate that there would be trash enclosures on site. Have you come up with a conceptual location for trash receptacles?
Uh, I have not at this time, but, uh, yes, there will be trash receptacles, uh, uh, spaced in proximity to the buildings and screened properly to, uh, uh, provide the appropriate, uh, locations for the trash collection and recycling and with access to, to the, uh, trucks that would be doing the pickup. And access as well to the, uh, office and warehouse spaces so that, uh, they are, uh, reasonably spaced throughout the site.
And let's confirm on the record.
Ken, can I just ask a clarifying question on that? I just want to make sure, because we have seen some other warehouse applications where on the ends of the loading bays, they've, uh, proposed trash compactors for recycling, cardboard, things of that nature. Is that, is any of that type of proposed for this, for these two buildings?
We have, talking to the people who build these buildings, we have learned that the compactors are something that they often ask for. There may be a compactor for each building that would be shown on a site plan. Right now, that's not the goal. The goal now is to have traditional trash and recyclable in, uh, enclosures. And just so that the records complete, those enclosures would be masonry and their architecture would be compatible with the buildings.
Yeah, I think if we're coming back for another hearing, I think we want just a little bit more clarity, especially like I said, there, we have had ones where they've been outside the building. If there's no noise associated with those units. Um, you know, I'll just point out for the board that the loading bay configuration for the two buildings, I think all but the last ones on the ends are standard, um, uh, loading gates where you pull the truck right up to it and you load pretty much right off the back of the truck into the door. The, the last two on either end is, um, has, has a platform that's flush with the door. So conceivably a forklift or something like that could be coming out of that door and dropping stuff into a compactor. I think we just want to know as part of the use testimony, if there's anything that's being operated outdoors that could generate noise, what the potential impact or lack thereof is to the neighboring property owners, especially since the properties to the west and north, I believe are residential.
We will do so.
Thank you.
The last questions that I had from Mr. Strong had to do with signage. I think that we already spoke to the one monument sign that's intended to be fully compliant with the ordinance. That is the conclusion of my questioning of Mr. Strong about the plan, the bi- bifurcated use variance plan that he has presented to the board for consideration. Mr. Chair, um, we anticipate that if this application moves forward with the, you, from use variance to site plan, that all of those items discussed by Mr. Strong will be fully engineered and the testimony will be full, fully engineered testimony at the time of the site plan. But at this time, Mr. Strong is available for your questions. Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Thank you.
To fellow board members.
Mr. Chairman, um, couple of things with the display of the exhibits, I kind of concur with Jennifer. I'm having a hard time gaining a feel for this, because first of all, I don't see this with the Google Earth, so it's hard for me to know what's on the northern property or on the southern property, and I'm sure the public may have the same issues.
Okay, noted. Um, and then we could ask Charlie maybe to take control and, and give us a, a snapshot of that. If Mr. Pape and the app, it doesn't have that.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the dark green in my, so just assuming that's the, uh, existing woodlands there now existing growth because that, I don't have an idea what that dark green is.
The Google Earth, like the, the A, either A thirteen or A fourteen may be of some value. You want to introduce them again so that to see if, how Mr. Mertens feels about them being sufficiently informative and we could go through Mr. Strong's testimony on the points again. Okay, that's a little bit better. Um, the only thing is is there you'd like to see the la- the buffer superimposed on the area. Is that, is that correct?
Because it would, yes, because right now I believe this is a winner shot, so I don't even know what it would look like.
We'll make a commitment that it will take the buffer elements from the colored rendering and we'll bring them over to this aerial photograph so that they are clear. And that will be an exhibit that we present when we see you next.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, and also, do we know who the, the properties on the bordering to the south? Um, it does look like there's a business. I, I mean, it's hard for me to tell, but is there existing owner there and what type of business is there?
I think that's the funeral home.
Okay, that's Lakewood Funeral Home. Okay.
Lakewood Funeral.
Okay, I know, okay, I know where that is now. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other board members?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
Um, yeah, I can curl with, with Mr. Mertens. I, I would just like to know how many, how much of that area is forested with mature trees versus just shrubs. I know it's kind of, a lot of it kind of knocked down and not quite sure what was there before. And then, and then with regard to the sidewalk, that may be a suggestion, my input. Um, it should wrap around the circle, Jen, because that would have, that would mean that a pedestrian would not have to cross the southern part of the jug handle where the cars are entering.
That's perfectly fine with me, whatever you guys want.
Yeah, that's, I'm, just seems to make sense to me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other board members?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Borrello.
Is Mr. Strong gonna be here to answer questions on traffic?
Um, traffic is Scott Kennel, Mr. Borrello.
Yes. I'll wait.
Anyone else? Any board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, Mr. Strong, you ran by the numbers earlier on the parking element. I think you said there's thirty-five loading docks. Could you just recover those numbers for me, please?
Yes, uh, yeah, there are twenty loading docks along the, uh, southerly side of the southerly building and fifteen on the westerly side of the northerly building, so there are thirty-five loading docks, yes.
Okay, and how many trailer parking spaces are there?
There are, uh, fourteen trailer parking spaces adjacent to the southerly side of the northerly building. And an additional eight, uh, at the westerly side of where the, uh, main entrance drive comes out to the rear of this, of the site for a total of twenty-two.
Right, and the spaces for customers and employees, I think you said totaled eighty? Am I correct?
Eighty, eighty-three, yes.
Eighty-three.
Or seventy, seventy-one is required.
All right. Would you know on the offhand where the closest bus stops may be on Route nine? For non-drivers to access the facility?
I don't know that offhand.
Okay.
Maybe you can get that, Peter, before you guys come back. Meeting.
Yeah, Scott may know, I don't know.
I know that Mr. Kennel's listening. I'm just gonna charge Mr. Kennel with identifying the bus routes along the Route nine corridor for our presentation.
Right, that would play into the, uh, sidewalk necessitation as well. Thank you.
What do you got, Jose?
Yes, just a quick question. Eh, in reference to the parking for customers, uh, how many spaces for parking for handicapped people leave up?
I believe there's six, maybe seven.
Takes.
Peter, is that? Yeah, we're, 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 for eighty-three parking spaces, we're required to have four. We have more than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not a hundred percent sure. This may be, uh, for the, uh, the traffic, but, uh, testimony. But, uh, uh, we touched upon the jug handle and having two-way going in, so am I to believe that someone's coming south on Route nine, they're gonna be making a right into that three lane part of the jug handle? Or is that something from Mr. Kennel? I don't want to get.
That's correct. That's, that's the intent. Yes, there's one lane coming in, so if you're coming south on Route nine, you would make a right and go into the site that way. And then there are two, two lanes going outward.
So, Mr. Strong, is there an island that's gonna separate the outbound and inbound or?
You're gonna be able to propose it this time, uh?
You're, you're gonna cross over, you know, come, someone's gonna come around and swing wide, forget that right there, it's been done and, um, yeah, something has to be done there.
Is, is Scott Kennel gonna talk about this, Ken, or is this?
Scott's going to share with.
Right, so my question would be, if you could make a right in right there, what is the purpose of the balance of the jug handle? So I don't want the answer now, but uh, you know, if, if you can make a right-hand turn in before you get to the jug handle, what is the purpose of all that extra pavement, like?
I would imagine to go to the Stell Lane, right?
No. Oh, maybe, maybe to go around and then go across, but the Stell Lane dead ends, but yeah, maybe to go across and then to those other.
Yes.
A- and, and maybe just for future, again, because Mr. Kennel's not gonna be tonight, maybe, you know, address the potential of killing depending on what, who is going in here. Obviously, with, again, operations, we need to get into that, but that's another thought in my head, that's all.
Yeah, and I, I frequently use that jug handle because the other one it lanes, the, the one north of that is always too crowded. And it's much easier. Why that was jug handle to get to BJ's and the LA Fitness.
Mr. Cantor, that's why that was put in. Th- that was a single and we, a- a- and DOT approved it to be a double so that the overflow traffic that was not able to get across nine to either the BJ's or the Lowe's, would it be able to come down, do the jug handle, turn around, go up and into the, uh, the shopping area, so.
Yeah, so the impact on that is gonna have to be discussed as well. Now that, now that that is gonna be used as a alternative, you know.
Yeah, and that's kind of the sum of what, what my questions were about, but I, I, again, I don't know, that's Mr. Kennel. I don't want to jump the gun, but just, uh, for future thoughts.
Yeah, if I'm sitting there waiting to make a left back out onto Route nine and there's trucks coming at me, I'm not gonna be too comfortable.
To, the, the suggestion is that there be a, a, a physical divider between ingress and egress traffic movements. Where that hand is moving now, is, is that the suggestion, Mr. Chair? Oh, Mr. Pape, you know, a lot, a, a lot, a lot more than that, you know, I mean, you're showing, you're sho- you're showing a right angle with your yellow, um, depiction, although there is a curvature there, you know.
Yeah.
That, that, that all has to be looked at. That doesn't, it doesn't look well as another one.
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Kennel will share.
Yellow is just the property line.
That's correct.
Right, yeah.
It will.
What they're trying to say is that a tractor trailer is not gonna make that harsh ninety-degree movement and are they gonna be required to go into another traveling, even if they're like came off the road into the shoulder, are they gonna be able to, are they gonna have to swing into the traveling to make that movement to get in? And I, so I think that that I think what the concern is.
Yeah, that was the cue, my killing idea, Jen. May- maybe I, I worded that wrong, but that, that's kind of the idea, yes.
And yeah. Okay, so Mr. Kennel is, is listening and I think Mr. Kennel will, uh, share with you the DOT pre-application meeting that he had. And then we'll talk about the improvements that we're proposing to Route nine, subject of course to the New Jersey Department of Transportation's approval, but that'll be all part of his testimony. Okay, fellow board members, did I miss anybody?
Mr. Chair.
Rebel.
Mr. Rebel.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was, uh, just looking at the stormwater management plan and Charlie kind of beat me to the punch with the additional test pits in the, in the basins at the bottom. That was one of my notes. So just echoing that.
All right, Mr. Rebel, thank you.
No problem. Mr. Chair, before we wrap up with Mr. Strong, uh, or move to anything else, I just want to make two more, uh, points and ask a couple more questions real quickly. So regarding the sidewalk, obviously we talked about the sidewalk along the frontage. I think the board's preference was for it to go around the roundabout. Obviously, it's gonna be subject to DOT's review and approval. There is, I believe, some sidewalk that crosses the, uh, the, the roundabout right now. I'd ask that it also be tied into that crosswalk. Obviously, it's gonna be subject to DOT's review and approval. Um, as far as sidewalk on the site, I think an earlier rendering of the plan had sidewalk linking, you know, the building to the parking area. But the most recent submission that we got eliminated that sidewalk. So, um, you know, obviously with a lot of, uh, heavy vehicles or WB sixty-sevens and, you know, box trucks coming in and out of the site, you know, I think we want to see where sidewalks are gonna be proposed and make sure that's accommodated with the stormwater management design, so we don't have pedestrians walking in the thirty-foot circulation aisle. Um, and then to Mr., I believe it was Mr. Ryan's questioning regarding like what the actual specific count on the number of trailer parking spaces and then also loading bays. Um, so the trailer spaces are for parking trailers without any, you know, the front part of the vehicle, right? Just the trailers, Ken?
Trailer staging, no tractors attached, no products stored.
Okay, and then how about for the loading? Is there any intent for parking trailers or like parking vehicles overnight for them while they're being loaded? What's the intent for the loading areas?
The, the, the loading docks are, are prime real estate. There is the potential of there being a trailer in the dock over.
There is the potential of there being a trailer in the dock overnight. But you're not, you're not talking, you know, anything that's long, long-term, and there is the potential of a tractor being attached to a trailer when it's at the loading dock. That's why the, the length of those exceeds the, the trailer's storage length.
Okay, but it's no long-term parking or anything like that, and, uh, it's just for loading of the mi- equipment, or sorry, loading of the truck, and then it's going on its, on its way, so, and then along those lines, I'll have questions as far as operation, and when we get to Mr. Kennel regarding trips, turnover, percentage of heavy, you know, truck traffic coming to and from the site, and we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to that.
Sure.
So I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. All right, fellow board members. We're good to proceed, or do we wanna take ten minutes?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Just saying, can we take a five-minute health break, please?
We're gonna take a ten-minute health break, Eileen?
The meeting will now take a ten-minute break, it reconvene at eight forty-nine PM. The meeting will now reconvene.
Mr. Aguirre. John?
Yes, sir.
Question. Does the Howell PD still have a traffic and safety officer?
Uh, yes, um, I do not know the name, I believe he's been replaced with two officers, uh, at the current time, but I could get you that name.
Right, we, we have one, and then we had two, yes, I remember Officer Bishop many years ago was one at the time.
Uh, Miss, uh, Kuzo's indicating that we currently have now three officers.
Okay. That's good to know, um, because we need to start getting them involved in some of this. When it comes to traffic safety and so forth. Okay, do we have everybody back? Eileen, you called the, the meeting back, uh, Mr. Pape?
Yes.
We're, we're, it's back to you, sir.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Chair, the testimony of Mr. Strong tonight is concluded, there'll be additional information added to the plan, and there'll be a new plan, the, the plan with the buffer superimposed on the, on the aerial, and Mr. Strong will present that at the subsequent meeting. Listening to the questions that the board and board professionals have for Mr. Kennel believes that it would be remiss if we started his testimony and he was not one hundred percent authorized to conclude. So I'm making the decision to not have Mr. Kennel testify this evening. Our next witness is Steve Redasti, his testimony is, is prepared, and I think that we can present it to you, um, co- in a complete form. And then I would defer to you as to whether we're carried, or whether you wish to open the public for the two witnesses who have testified this evening. It's your meeting to run, Mr. Chair, and we're prepared to follow your guidance on that point.
Mr. Pape, that, of course, will be predicated upon the fact that both Mr. Strong and Mr. Redasti would be back during the second iteration.
All of the witnesses, Mr. Chair, will continue with us, no one will drop off.
Okay, you know, the public has a right, we wanna give them every right, but they should have all the facts, too.
Very fine.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, we'll present to you this evening, Mr. Redasti. At the conclusion of Mr. Redasti's testimony. At the concl- oh, uh, and after his examination by the board. I will take a moment to, one, just share with you certain administrative steps that we took before we got here, and second, to ask if anyone wants to provide us with any further guidance, questions, or directions to take home as our homework. So with, with that, Mr. Chair, Mr. Stephen Redasti, um, who has been sworn could share with you his credentials, both educational and professional.
Certainly, um, my name's Stephen Redasti, I'm a licensed, uh, architect in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree, uh, from New Jersey into Technology from nineteen ninety-two. In nineteen ninety-six, I became licensed in the state of New Jersey. Um, a principal at Perez and Redasti Associates, I am, um, Vice President in Charge of Operations at the firm. Uh, testified in front of dozens of municipalities in New Jersey, uh, including Howell Township.
So, Mr. Redasti, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
That is correct.
Okay, we accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Redasti, I think that it would be best if you, uh, made a a, a narrative presentation of the architectural plans that you've prepared. I'm going to ask that you identify the building's footprint, take us inside the building. I know it's conceptual, but take us inside the building. If you could also talk about architectural features that you've incorporated into the building, and if you could, um, point out the, the manner in which you handle the office elements of the building.
Uh, yes, of course, um, should I share my screen, or, um, I wanna use Exhibit A eleven? Would the town be sharing that, or should I, um, share my screen?
If Eileen can put it up, I think that's ideal.
Sure, we will put it up.
Thank you.
Uh, Exhibit A eleven, uh, dated eleven thirty twenty-two.
Eileen, I can pull it up if you want, I just, uh, the exhibit list says colorize, uh, version of it. Steve, is, is there actual color in it, or is it?
Uh, it is, it is colorized, it, it should be, um, it should be three sheets. Uh, CS one, CS two, and CS three, and it's floor plan and building elevation, uh, with your color.
So, yeah, Eileen, I think you have to share that, cuz I think I might have a scan that's only black and white and on my server, so.
Well, why doesn't the witness share it, if he can, since he, then he could use his cursor and that kind of thing.
Uh, whatever you prefer, I'm, I'd be happy to.
Very good. Let's, let, let's put Steve up.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so I have in front of me, uh, sheet CS one, uh, the floor plan, dated eleven thirty twenty-two, and this is part of Exhibit A eleven. Ex- A eleven consists of three separate drawings. So we designed, uh, two separate warehouse office buildings, uh, one of a hundred ten thousand square feet and one of ninety thousand square feet, for a total of two hundred thousand, uh, square feet of office and, uh, warehouse space. Uh, the building on Lot number twenty-one can be split into two separate warehouse spaces. And has, uh, two potential separate office areas. Uh, one on the northeast, uh, corner of the space, and one on the southern corner. Uh, each office space is twenty-five hundred square feet, for a total of up to five thousand square feet of office space. Uh, the building at Lot twenty, uh, also can be broken up into two separate warehouse tenants, with two potential office spaces. Um, both office spaces, um, add up to a total of five thousand square feet, just like, uh, the building at Lot twenty-one. Um, both buildings are of non-combustible construction, and will be fully fire-sprinkling. So I have here Sheet CS two, which is part of the same exhibit. I have designed these buildings to have a high-end look and to compliment, complement each other architecturally. Uh, I work closely with the board planner, Jennifer Beam, and spend a, a lot of time developing the look of the buildings. Uh, both buildings will be forty-five feet in height, and are constructed of tilt-up or pre-cast concrete panels. Um, at building number, uh, twenty-one, um, we position the office spaces in two of the corners, visible off the entry drive, so there would be a focal point on the building. So we have one, one on this corner here, and one on this corner here, so you would, as you drive by, you would see this office, and as you kept going, you would see the other office space here. Um, these corners have a corporate, um, these corners have a corporate look, uh, with a large amount of glazing. And the entry doors are covered with a horizontal cantilevered metal roof element. Uh, the building will have a colored concrete water table, um, that goes, uh, horizontally along the building, rises up, follows these focal points and rises up and like envelops the focal point at each corner to make, to, um, you know, make the building dynamic. The building will also has a series of full clear-story windows uh, up high with knockouts, that some of them can be converted to true clear-story windows with natural light uh, for the billion, building occupancy. The concrete panels are decorated with a total of four different earth-toned colors that complement each other. Uh, the same colors and materials will be utilized on all four building elevations. Uh, located above the two office areas on the south elevation are two, uh, building-mounted signs, one is here, and one is here. Uh, these signs will be internally illuminated and are three foot in height by ten feet long for a total of thirty square feet each, uh, sixty square feet total, uh, for the building. In the upper right-hand corner of the south facade uh, will be a thirty-inch-high addressed numeral, uh, constructed of metal channel numbers, and this would have the building address. I have here Sheet CS three, um, which is, uh, building number twenty. Um, the second building located in Lot twenty is aesthetically coordinated with the first building. Uh, the building is also forty-five feet in height, and is constructed of prefabricated concrete in the same earth-toned colors as the other buildings. Uh, this building also has two office areas, except one is located on the corner on the north elevation. While the other, uh, office is around the corner on the west elevation. So, one on this corner here, and then one around, around the corner there. Uh, the office areas are also accentuated with lots of glass and a horizontal metal roof over the entry doors. Uh, above the two office areas, there is also a, um, a three-foot by ten-foot internally illuminated building sign, similar to the other building, so there's one here, and there's one in this area here. There's also a thirty-inch-high addressed numeral at the top-left corner of the north elevation. It's getting covered here by the sharing note, but it's in this top corner right here. In addition to the building-mounted signs, we're proposing a monument sign. Coming down to the bottom of the sheet here. Um, the monument, monument sign will be constructed of colored concrete to match the design of the building. The sign would be a total of five foot in height, with a two-foot-high base, and would be twelve feet long. Uh, this would be a total of thirty-six square feet, excluding the base. Um, a sixteen-square-foot portion of the sign would be internally illuminated. In addition, there would be a twelve-inch-high addressed numeral located on the sign. I believe that the buildings meet the intent of one eighty-eight dash two-two-eight General Residential Architectural Design Standards. Um, so, um, some items that.
Non-residential design standards, not residential, non-residential.
Oh, sorry, I meant to say that, uh, non-residential, correct. Um, some items that we include, uh, such as having a, a concrete plinth at the base of the wall having projecting metal canopy, use of opaque and translucent glass, and having a belt course of different colors. Um, the buildings also do not have any blank interrupted, uninterrupted length exceeding fifty feet without a change in texture, color, or having a window or equivalent element. Um, and, uh, Ken, I think that's, uh.
I think that was a complete presentation, but I do have two questions for you. One, you have, historically, you have worked with, uh, uh, this team on other applications in Howell. And I know that you have spent considerable time with Chief Lewis. Mr. Chief Lewis will, will have FDC requirements for the building. And he will require that the buildings be designed to, I think they're, to have re- a repeater system built into them. And Chief Lewis also, um, is going to ask for a confirmation that the buildings are fully actively fire-suppressed. Could you confirm that you're familiar with the FDC requirements, and this building will be designed as Chief Lewis re- requires in that regard?
Uh, y- yes, I am familiar, and, and yes, we will meet his requirement.
And this is a fully suppressed, it's an active suppression system, um, in both buildings?
That is correct.
Okay, I have one, one more thing, if you could, um, HVAC systems. Where would the HVAC system be located, and what is the manner of screening them from public view?
So, uh, any HVAC systems, for, for the warehouse, for the most part, the HVAC systems are going to be located inside the building. Um, because the building, we do not anticipate other than the office areas to be air-conditioned. So, uh, any, it'd probably be raid, rating heaters, and they'd be inside the building. HVAC systems for the office would include air conditioning, and these would be, uh, roof-mounted, but they would be hidden behind uh, these parapets that are taller at the corners. Um, we also don't need the full, uh, the, the full ceiling height in the corners where the offices are, so, uh, if, if needed, we'll use that to conceal, uh, any rooftop unit.
I made a statement earlier this evening to the board that the art, that the trash receptacles would have the same materials and would be designed to be compatible with the building. Knowing that you will be called upon to do so, I appreciate if you could confirm that you can and will design the trash enclosures in that manner.
Uh, yes, I will, and, and they will match the building.
Earlier, there was a question as to whether you intend to have building-mounted lighting on your building. If you could identify the types of lighting that you would incorporate into the final building design.
Uh, yes, any building-mounted lighting would be, uh, LED, and it would be, uh, shielded from view from outside the property.
Would it be confined to the entrance, the door entrances, where it's required for safety purposes?
Uh, that is correct, it would be, um, it would be at the doors, uh, below the canopies, uh, at all the door entrances.
Mr. Chair, board members, I have no further examination of Mr. Redasti, and he is available to you at this time.
Thank you, Jen?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Redasti's office has worked very closely with my office in establishing the architecture that you see before you, his office has worked with me on a number of projects in town, so I think by now he's pretty good at understanding what it is that I'm looking for, and that we in the township are looking for. Um, so I do agree with his testimony that this building design does meet with the intent of the non-residential architectural requirements of our ordinance.
Thank you. Charlie, any comment on the architectural?
Yeah, just a couple clarifying questions, so, uh, just wanna make sure it's clear for the board, so it's five total signs proposed, two wall facade on each of the two warehouses, and then the one monument sign out front. The applicant put representation at the monument sign's gonna be shifted to comply with the setback requirement. And then, Ken, as far as the monument sign orange requirements, it's gonna comply with all, you know, sizing requirements, correct?
All, all, yes, Steve's very much familiar, all, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, sorry, and then if the board rules favorably on the application as part of site plan, the applicant will, uh, provide landscaping plantings at the base of the monument sign. Uh, to share your satisfaction?
Yes, and, and, and Mr. Redasti identified that there's a two-foot, um, base below the actual sign face that's specifically designed to accommodate that.
Okay, uh, and I just wanna clarify the building height, right, so you have the drop-loading area on the, for the loading areas. So that forty-five-foot max is from the average grade, so it's based off of that dropped loading, right? It's not gonna be from the finished floor elevation for the, for the building, correct?
I'm sorry, that, that is for the average grade, that's correct.
Gotcha, okay. And then the last thing, and I don't know if Ken, if the applicant's prepared to provide testimony regarding it, kind of with the signage being internally illuminated. You know, is it site going to be, the sign's going to be lit all hours of the day? Is this like 24 hours a day operation or is that something you're going to hold for an operational?
We can hold for operational, but I, I can share with you, the monument sign which provides direct orientation and direction. To those traveling to the site would be illuminated, the, the building signs do not need to be illuminated overnight. We can, we can develop that with you at site plan if we're fortunate enough to so progress.
Yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Adasti?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick one, and again, we might be getting operations a little bit ahead, but I can tell by the. The plans put before us here, are we looking at this as potentially being four different tenants?
Yes, there's a potential of four different tenants, not necessarily four tenants, but up to four tenants.
Yeah, that's what I was just wondering, because I could see the offices and the way it was divided up. And I know that's going to get into operations, but I appreciate the answer, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add something, Mr. Chair. We're asking for two buildings with a maximum of two tenants per building. It could be one or two tenants per building. We're asking for up to two tenant identification signs on the buildings. But we're prepared to stipulate that if there is one tenant in a building. Then we're only asking for one sign. We would always match the number of signs to the number of tenants, not to exceed two per building.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. So fellow board members, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Adasti?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Not hearing.
Mr. Chair.
I, I appreciate you, go ahead, please ask the question.
Sure, I have a comment and it actually refers back when we were in our 10 minute recess. As I mentioned, I was looking through the stormwater management plan, I apologize for going backwards. Since they're going to have to go out there and do additional test pits, I did notice. On basin B1, I was looking at the test pit depths and the depth of tests permeate, two permeometer tests. That's the permeability test they performed on the soil. The depths of those tests were performed above the proposed bottom of basin, which basically doesn't do anything. Cause you're not testing the soil that you're going to be infiltrating into, you're, they tested the soil. That would be excavated out to dig the basin. So just for example, boring or test pits B21 through B24. Their, their tests were between elevation 83.4 and 84.8. And the top of sand is at 83.6. So that sand is material that's being placed, that's not native material. So they have to be below elevation 83, because that sand at the bottom of the basin, six inches thick. So they're up around 85, they're a couple of feet above it, they're not testing the material that's actually going to be infiltrated. So it's not representative of the in situ conditions. So I would say in addition to doing those test pits at the basins that didn't have any. That they reperform a couple of task bits at basin B1 and test below that elevation 83.
Thank you, Mr. Rebel, Charlie, you want to help us here?
No, I concur with that assessment that Mr. Rebel said. Obviously, the site layout has changed and the location of basins has changed. Numerous times prior to them coming to the board here. And the elevation of the site layout has changed a couple of times too, so that's kind of why there's some difference. With some of the elevations of the test pits, but you know, I, I believe, and if I'm not mistaken, I think. None of the basins other than basin A use exfiltration in the stormwater management design. So the basins is apart from basin A are not rely on, on exfiltration for any like quantum control, like I said, other than that basin A. But yes, we can obviously require the extra due diligence should this proceed to, to the site plan. Like I said, we still have to, Mr. Pape still has to address that contributory drainage area to basin A. So conceivably, we could see another basin or that basin being split. So you know, we'll, we'll have potentially some additional comments, you know, prior to this being all wrapped up.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rebel, appreciate that, that's good stuff. Mr. Morello, you have something for us?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Cantor, Mr. Mertens.
Yeah, nothing in regard to the, to the architect, Mr. Chairman.
Ask no questions either.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Mr. Pape.
Yes, sir.
Here's the thing, Mr. Pape, you know, you, you said you were going to present with the two. And that we were going to then talk about administrative and going forward, right? You know. The, Mr. Strong's overview. You know, shows us that, that Estelle Lane. It doesn't look right. And so. You know, you're going to go back and you're going to go revisit. I'd like to know what the purpose is of using Estelle Lane is before we leave here tonight. You know, I thought that when this application was coming forward. That the traffic was supposed to come in and then go down on route nine. Right to county line and then do its thing. And not traverse up. Or that if it was going to turn around, it was going to turn around on the southbound side. Over by Alexander and then come across and then go north. You know, can we touch on that, Jen, Charlie?
Could we get an exhibit up, I think the rendering would be best. The lawyer can't testify, but the lawyer could provide an outline of what will come in the way of testimony. And that's what I'll offer, Mr. Chair. But if we could put up the rendering. Please. A. A 16.
We're putting it up now, Mr. Pape.
Thank you.
Jen, help me out here too, please, I, I thought, you know, we were.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're asking, to be honest.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, I, I, I thought, you know. This is a little, you know, off of the, the norm. I thought all traffic was going to go south. And it was going to come in.
Around the jug handle kind of thing, right? I mean, I, I would, and a hundred percent if you want to understand what's coming, that's one thing. But I would venture to guess that how this is going to work is going to be part of Mr. Kennel's testimony. When, when we come back. And it's probably part of the overall like trip distribution, like where the trips are coming from. Where they're going to, I mean, Mr. Pape, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but. I would venture to guess that he is going to touch on this when he testifies, so. You know, I'm sure that Mr. Pape can give you a general idea, but I think he'll give you more of the specifics that you want. When he testifies at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, you know, you know, Jen, Mr. Pape, one second, please. Jen, Jen, you know, we, the township do not have per se a traffic engineer. Within our engineering department.
Yes, I understand.
So, you know, we have the Howell Township Police Department, that's track, traffic and safety. You know, is it appropriate, you think for us to ask them to take a look at this before, you know, just to give us their input on what. Might be presented with regards to traffic and safety in this area.
Hundred percent.
Okay, and so, so, so Mr. Pape, you know, I, I know that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm expanding this a little bit. So Mr. Agiar. You know, can you, and I, can you get Ms. Eileen to, to work that? So that when the applicant comes forward and submits their, their preliminaries, that at least the township takes a look at it. Over on the traffic and safety side with Howell Township.
I, it's my understanding that they have forwarded these plans for coming. I believe particular plans have come back with any. To see if they have any additional input.
I mean, maybe, maybe just. Identify the fact that the, that the board is concerned and, and, you know. And say, could you just take a closer look just to make sure that there's no concerns? Just because I know they get a lot of applications, both of our boards are extremely busy. And then just identify that the board is concerned about the, the safety of the ingress and egress. On, on the highway and, and see what, if they're, if they have any comments about it.
Sure, not a problem. And just to understand the chair's question or concern, it is the fact that I'm in the southbound. Traffic, the trucks are making a left hand turn instead of.
You're making a right hand turn, a right. Eileen, can you mute because he's echoing? Um, yeah, because if you look at that plan, John, the, that driveway, like, yeah, that is like a, like a literally a 90 degree turn in. So I would find it highly unlikely if there's a truck sitting at the, sitting there to go left out, right? That a tractor trailer is going to be able to make that movement without swerving into the travel lane, you know what I mean?
No, I, I agree a hundred percent. I, I don't know why there was a change, the way it currently works is southbound comes around. In a clock, clockwise pattern, I don't know if there was what, I'm sure there's a reason for it, but why? And maybe go in this way.
I, yeah, so maybe that's going to be the answer is that the trucks are going to have to use the jug handle and maybe a passenger car could make the right in. But I think Mr. Kennel is, I know he's in the audience and he's listening intently, so. These are all things that we would like for him to address, but if they could take a look at it, because. If there are trucks in those two outbound lanes, I don't think a tractor trailer can turn in without, without impacting the travel lane. And that, and as you know, John, this area down in the south portion of Howell, we have experienced our fair share of accidents on Route 9 down in this section of town.
I'm aware.
If I may, to just, I, by way of an outline of the presentation that we'll make. And the purposes of the improvements to Estelle Lane. May I, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Pape.
Thank you, so as you're traveling southbound on Route 9, there's that small gray triangle that is, that is conceptual. Just showing that there would be modification of the radius on the driveway. It is not engineered. The pre-construction meeting that we had, pre-application meeting that we had with the DOT that was discussed. And the, because we have ownership of all the lands that are there, we have plenty of room, plenty of room to work with. To design the radius that accommodates the anticipated tractor trailer and keeps the trailer on its side of the road. So we'll present that with greater detail through Mr. Kennel. On the other side, and on the Estelle Lane side. The, if, if a tractor trailer is coming from the south, traveling north. And elects to use that jug handle to come into our site. Both Mr. Kennel and the DOT pointed out that there was, it was, it was not adequate room on that side. Of the, for a tractor trailer to maneuver safely. And additional lands were required. And that is the reason that our client purchased a shopping center. Not that he wanted a shopping center, but he needed that land in order to design a safe, that little wedge there. To design a safe. A modification to the, to the side of the jug handle. So that's why there's improvements on that side as to accommodate the tractor trailer that's coming from the south. And wants to come into our site and we'll, we'll provide considerable testimony about the change to the radius on the driveway to accommodate a truck coming in. Did that, is, is that the outline, Chair, that you were looking for?
Yes, Mr. Pape, as long as. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. So.
Administratively, let's talk about next steps.
Sure. When, when would your board, when will this board be able to accommodate our return? I anticipate that Mr. Strong and his team are going to need about. Three or four weeks to do the necessary revisions, so what would be the next opportunity to come back?
Eileen, April?
Mr. Pape, I have April 24th open.
If I may, so I have, let me, to all members of the team, Mr. Kennel, Mr. Adasti, Mr. Strong and Ms. Coffin. Could you send me a text message to confirm your availability for April 24th? Looks like we're good. Yes, the team is available on the 24th, so. We would ask that we be carried to April 24th without the requirement of renotice or republication. Of course, we'll make the necessary resubmission, no, we'll do it as early as possible, but in no event later than within 10 days of that hearing date. Mr. Chair, with regard to the police. I've had the privilege of working before the town, Howell Township's planning and zoning boards for the past 40 years. The number of times that we've met with police officers, either on the property or in their offices is numerous. And if it's an acceptable procedure, I would reach out to the traffic and safety police officers. And ask if we could have a meeting with them. To make the meeting most meaningful, I would invite the other professionals to the board to join us to make sure that the correct messages are brought to their attention. Would that be an acceptable procedure and for this application?
Yes, Mr. Pape, that would.
Great, when, we would make a point of inviting Ms. Beam and Mr. Cunliffe if they wish to join us. And I'll, I'll take responsibility for that request. To Ms. Kusa, I'm going to ask if she could identify the officers by name and title so that I can address them properly.
Would you like them right now or?
I'll, I'll get them from you, I'll get them from you tomorrow, thank you.
And Mr. Pape, can I have an extension because currently it expires on March 14th right now? The application.
Ms. Kusa, Mr. Chairman, on the record, the applicant grants an extension of time for the board to deliberate, take formal action. Through the end of April 2023, and we will memorialize that in correspondence to Ms. Kusa tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Eileen, we're talking April 30th?
Yes. They're rescheduled till April 24th.
Yeah, and all, Mr. Chair, if we're unable to conclude, of course, there'll be responsible extensions granted to the board. I have nothing further to go over with the board administratively, other than to make a commitment to make the revisions, meet with your staff. And to set up the meeting with the, the police department. Is there any further guidance or direction from your board professionals or the board members this evening after hearing what you've heard?
Fellow board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I know we are, be limiting the public to just the testimony tonight. But do you think we should at least give them an opportunity just to question the testimony from tonight? So maybe they can come up with maybe something that we didn't think of as far as when they come back next time?
You know, Mr. Mertens, there's a lot of change that needs to be done with these plans. That has to be re-presented. So, you know, they're going to come back and they're going to give us new testimony, basically. And that'll be a little more concrete for the public then to address.
Okay, I mean. I'm good with whatever we decide.
Yes. So, Eileen, fellow board members. On case number BA 21-10. This is a use and bulk variance. It's seeking only variance approval at this time. This application is being carried to April 24th, 2023. This application is being carried to April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. With an extension of time to thirty April twenty twenty-three. At that time, um, we will hear. Further testimony. And have the traffic engineer get on the record.
Very fine, Mister Chair. Then to Mister Chair, all board members, professionals and public, thank you all, good evening.
Alright, thank you, good night.
Good night, Mister Pape.
Good night.
Eileen?
Yes?
For, for us, the board, are we talking about going back to the public anytime soon? Are they talking planning board, what, what, what's, what's going on?
Um, I'm not sure of that communication, um, maybe Eileen Rabano would know more than I would.
Alright, so, are, are you hearing anything, Jen?
I'm sorry, I missed a question, what did you say?
Going back in line?
No, there, there's no plans as of right now.
The planning board's holding, okay, got it. Alright, thank you. Alright, everyone, appreciate you, appreciate all your support and help and assistance in this matter. Um, you know, Eileen, when's the next meeting?
March thirteenth.
Ooh, March thirteenth, okay. Uh, so then, uh, you know, everyone be safe, be well, and we'll see everybody on March thirteenth. Alright, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
To adjourn, Mister Chair.
All in favor?
Good night.
Alright, good night, Jen.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Good night.